I call the order of the August 26, 2019, regular business meeting of the Waynesboro City Council. Vice Mayor Henderson would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd remind those in attendance this evening that if you'd like to speak during the public comment period, we've got some sign up sheets towards the door and I'd love to hear from you this evening. Number two on the agenda is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number three is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number four are matters from council members. Does any one have anything they'd like to share this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind folks that I will be having my constituent meeting. I'm checking the date here so I don't give you the wrong date. It will be Tuesday, September the 3rd at 9:00 a.m. at the French Press. And so I will be there that morning to talk about whatever folks bring to the table.
Great, thank you. So I've got one additional item. We've had some conversations on council over the last couple of weeks related to expressions of hate and intolerance in our community. And we want our community, its visitors, and those looking for a new place to call home to know without a shadow of doubt that the identity and values of the city of Waynesboro are one of inclusion, dignity, and tolerance, diversity, and kindness. It's for these reasons that my colleagues and I felt it important to share firmly through the following resolution, an acknowledgement and affirmation of the values of your elected leadership and more broadly, the values of our community. Hate has no place in the city of Waynesboro. So with that, with the approval of council here, I'm going to offer the following resolution for our consideration. Condemning hateful expressions of intolerance and bigotry. Whereas a diversity of communities and religious groups and the promotion of tolerance and acceptance for all races and nationalities is a hallmark of American freedom. Whereas we, the council, reject all statements of bigotry, discrimination, oppression, and racism in Waynesboro, Virginia. Whereas we further denounce behaviors that target traditionally persecuted peoples, including people of color, their verbal attacks with verbal attacks, incitement, and violence. Whereas the citizens of Waynesboro, Virginia have a stake in opposing every form of bigotry and hatred against people based on religion, race, or place of birth and origin, and instead wish to promote goodwill among neighbors, harmonious civic life, and systems that lift all citizens. Now, therefore be resolved that the city council of Waynesboro, Virginia strongly rejects and condemns the distribution of hateful expressions of intolerance that are contradictory to the values that define the people of the United States and of the city of Waynesboro. And urge the citizens of Waynesboro to join together in rejecting the spreading of hate. So with that, I'd offer that up as a resolution and look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Motion carries. Item four, this five this evening, is to receive a presentation from Cameron McCormick, our finance director regarding a proposed revised fund balance policy for the general fund. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to some extent, this revision is prompted by recent conversations that the council had with the members of the school board and school board superintendent regarding the disposition of their annual unspent appropriation and the desire to ensure that those unspent dollars stay with the schools for their future expenditures. And further, that I, that we felt like as long as we were reviewing the fund balance policy, that there were some things that we might recommend to the council in addition. So with that, I would ask Mr. McCormick to make his presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Maintaining an appropriate level of fund balance is a key component of sound financial management. And accordingly, many communities establish policies for fund balance. An adequate fund balance level is essential to both short term and long term financial planning and serves to mitigate the impact of future risks, sustain operations during economic downturns, and enhance credit worthiness. Throughout the, through the maintenance of adequate levels of fund balance, the city can help stabilize funding for operations, stabilize taxes and fees, and realize cost savings and issuance of debt. The city has achieved a sufficient fund balance to set aside funds to meet the targets recommended in this policy. So the main, the main changes in this fund balance policy is currently your set aside contingency is housed in your unassigned fund balance. Management would recommend to go ahead and move that fund to a committed fund balance. This makes it easier for the readers of your financial statements to quickly look at your financial statements and gather, how much do you actually have that's not, that doesn't have any ties to it. Currently, your contingency sits in your unassigned fund balance, and you actually have to go into the footnote, so the financial statements, to understand that there is a contingency on that account. We would also recommend that instead of doing 110% of two months expenditures of the current fiscal year, that you do 16% of the prior year budget. In monetary terms, it's actually a little bit more conservative for this year. That would make your fund balance eight point, basically $8.2 million, where currently it's right just above $8 million. The way that that helps you is, one, we can determine what your reserve is as soon as your budget is adopted for the next year, makes it easier to plan for, and it also keeps from running into a situation where in your actual expenditures, your expenditures may spike or, spike or decrease, and then you end up adjusting your reserve, and it keeps your reserve more level if you do it off your budget, because that general, that number's generally a little bit more predictable. The only time that you can appropriate from your general contingency are your safety net reserves for unanticipated natural disasters, imposition of mandates by federal and state government, court decision, court decisions resulting in non-budget expenditure, or acts of terrorism. These are pretty rigid, and the reason for that is this is the money that you use to operate your city on a day to day basis. It keeps you from having to go out and take out a revenue anticipation note, or if you have a bond issuance, it keeps you from having to go out and take bond draw issuance notes. And let's just do things like be able to float for the grants, the Title I, Title II grants at the schools, they're expended, and then we get the money back for them. So we have to front the cash flow for those things. And then we don't get all of our tax revenue at the beginning of the year. So you have some expenditures at the beginning of the year where you have some, where you have less cash in the bank. So this contingency allows you to not have to go out and get revenue anticipation notes. So then I'll direct you guys to number seven, the general contingency. This is a contingency of $500,000. It's more for unanticipated losses in revenue. If you have a major bank, major taxpayer that files bankruptcy and can't pay their taxes, goes out of business, a large decrease in sales tax, something along those lines that comes up in the middle of the year, you can go to this reserve, and it gives you a little bit more time to make some decisions before your next year budget process. Number eight, any funds remaining in unassigned fund balance at the end of the year have first priority to go to capital, and they can't be used for recurring expenditures. And that's just good financial practice to make sure that you don't get into a situation where you're financing current year operations with leftover money from the previous year. Number nine is the piece of this that, or the discussion from the school board that actually sparked this, the review of this policy. This allows the school board to keep a portion of their operations. We're still discussing some of this with the school board, so you may see some different and, some different language in this when we bring it to you for final adoption. Any changes, I'll go ahead and redline for you all so that you can see any changes that come out before we bring it to you guys for final adoption. Hopefully that'll be sometime in September. The fund balance classifications, these are straight out of the Gadsby pronouncement, Governmental Accounting Standards Board pronouncement that governs your fund balance. The main change is being that you do have a Augusta County Service Authority landfill reserve of $350,000 in the committed fund balance, and then you have your revenue stabilization of 500 and your minor maintenance reserve of 300. One more thing to point out with this, we have discussed it with our, with our auditors, and they are comfortable if we can get this adopted before the CAFR is complete with making this change retroactive, so you can move your fund balance for your FY '19 CAFR, and the schools will be able to keep their fund balance. Any money left with the schools will need to be appropriated by you all through a normal appropriation of budget ordinance or amendment to the budget.
Okay. Great, thank you. Cameron, any questions? Great. Well, no, I'm excited about, this was, this was a low hanging fruit item, I think, from our, our joint, first joint meeting with our school board. And I'm so excited about being able to deliver that for them as we move forward. So thank you. All right. Item number six is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating permit fees received during fiscal year 2019 in the amount of $2,500 associated with the 2019 Dooms Volunteer Fire Company carnival held at Constitution Park to the general fund for donation to the Dooms Volunteer Fire Company. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, once again, the Dooms Volunteer Fire Company held their carnival, which is their major fundraising event of the year. I understand it was successful, and they report that they raised about $16,000 in this past carnival event. The Dooms Volunteer Fire Company is the city's closest and most frequently called upon mutual aid fire company. And as we've done in the past, we're requesting that the council refund building permit fees associated with the setup of the carnival and its equipment.
Thank you. Is there a motion to, any questions first? Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven is to consider appointing two individuals and reappointing an individual to the Economic Development Authority. Mr. Hamp.
Mayor Short and members of council, presented for your consideration of reappointment of Ms. Mary Sullivan to a four-year term ending August 31, 2023, and appointments for Ms. Angie Bandi, a four-year term ending August 31, 2023, and appoint Mr. Pete Brooks to an unexpired four-year term that will end August 31, 2021.
Great, thank you. Are there any, any questions, Mr. Hamp? So you're all okay, well, there's no objection to do all three at the same time? So there's a motion to make the appointments and reappointments?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight is to consider appointing two individuals and reappoint, reappointing an individual to the planning commission. Mr. Hamp.
So this evening, Mr. Stephen Airy is the reappointment candidate to a four-year term ending August 31, 2023. The next two are appointments for unexpired terms.
Julia, I don't have my cheat sheet. I think it was Mr. Tucker and Ms. Severs.
Okay.
So got those, those, those individuals. Again, if there's any objection, so Lori Tucker and Sarah Severs. So if there's no objection, could do all those at the same time. So is there a motion to make that reappointment and, and these new two appointments? Bless you.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I'd like to just personally extend an absolute heartfelt gratitude to all those that have applied for these positions. It is energizing to see the number of folks that are actively pursuing and wanting to become engaged, and I would reaffirm that we want you to keep, keep applying. And so please, they, it was, it's unfortunate we only have so many slots to divvy out, but very, very qualified individuals. So thank you. All right. Number nine is to consider adopting an ordinance appropriating state workplace readiness, industry certification, and STEM H credential funding in the amount of $5,040 to the school funds to be used for the workplace readiness skills for the Commonwealth examination, as well as internet and computer assessments and certifications for Waynesboro High School students in various career and technical education classes. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Okay, great. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine B is to consider adopting an ordinance appropriating Project Hope grant funds in the amount of $1,200 to the school funds to be used to supplement transportation for students. Any questions? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine C is to consider adopting an ordinance appropriating gift funds from the Pleasant View Spring Hill Rurutin Club in the amount of $1,000 to the school funds to be used for the Waynesboro Post-High House. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine D is to consider adopting an ordinance appropriating state CTE equipment allocations in the amount of $8,527 to the school funds to be used for upgrade career and technical education, computer labs at Kate Collins Middle School, and Waynesboro High School CTE annex. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine E is to consider adopting an ordinance appropriating a Title I, Part A, improving basic programs funding in the amount of $40,000 to the school funds to be used to support technology purchases at William Peary and Winona Elementary Schools. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item, and the last, item nine F is to consider adopting an ordinance appropriating a Title IV, Part A, Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant in the amount of $68,000 to the school funds to be used to support staff stipends and staff development to continue the implementation of the Virginia Tiered System of Supports in the elementary and secondary schools. Are any questions? Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll make it.
Okay. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Some water over that one. All right. Number 10 is communication correspondence and calendar. Mr. Hamp.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Okay, thank you. Number 11 is citizen comment period.
Ms. Debra Rogers.
Ms. Rogers, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, and just as a reminder, we've got a little stop light up here. Green means go, yellow means slow down, and red means if you could conclude your statement.
Okay. Okay. My name is Debra Rogers. I live at 901 West 11th Street, Waynesboro. I was here a couple of weeks ago and was talking about the basic city. And Mr. Shaw assured me that it was just rumors, that it was not sold, that it was not going to be demolished, and that was not so. Three days after we go to court, it is sold. His office, Mr. Shaw's office, did say that it was going to be demolished. They were there today.
If you could direct your comments towards me.
Okay. Why is that? It's all of y'all.
If, I know, but I'm, it's for the public comment period, and if you could direct your comments to council.
Okay.
And not staff members.
So I've got some, I made you guys some copies like you asked. All of this area is historical, and I don't understand why you guys don't clean it up and, and do something with it instead of letting it go by the wayside. I've got pictures of what it looks like now that I'd like for you guys to take a look at and I'll know if you guys have been down there, or if you even know what it looks like. But you sit here and you say that you want to stop the violence and the criminal activity and the, the bad things that plague our city. When you have areas like this, there's nothing that's going to come out of it but drug addicts. And you can see by these pictures that were just taken, that that's, that's what's happening. I, I'm not for sure what the law is about making something historical. I have some paperwork that says that it is. But if it is not, what, how do I go about getting you, Mr. Mayor, to make all of this area historical and stop the Magnificent Seven from going in and tearing it down? I'm asking you that question.
I'd be glad to talk to you after the meeting, yeah.
Well, I'd like for you guys to look at these pictures, and I mean, it's, can I come up there for a second?
Sure. I mean, if it would be more productive, I'd be, literally would be glad to, to come, come meet with you right after the meeting if you'd like.
I would really like that.
Glad.
Because this is, they're going to kick this man out of his house that he's lived in for 16 years. They're going to tear it down. This is the stables to Fairfax Hall. Fairfax Hall is historical. This is part of Fairfax Hall. The Southern Rose Building used to house so many different famous people from all over the world. And now it is slums, and it breaks my heart to see it like that. And I'm a title examiner. I've been a title examiner for 30 years. And I am doing my best to find anything I can on anyone, to get some leverage, to stop this from happening. Roger Willetts was there today with his crew. They're making plans on what's going to happen, that's already sold, how they're going to demolish these buildings. I do not want to see that happen. I'd like for you to stop this and give us some time on how to, how to clean this up, save his house, save the Southern Rose, and all the rest of the buildings on that street. Because all that's there now are meth heads.
Okay. I'd be glad to talk to you. Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Clay Frazier.
Mr. Frazier, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
My name's Clay Frazier, and I live at 332 North Converse. And like I said, Terry Shorter, Mr. JB Young was a very good friend of mine. And everybody knows that that place belongs to me. And I will tell you something. Country boy Rigneck from Alamo County ain't gonna let, ain't gonna let this happen. I'm telling you. This whole town is crooked, the lawyers is crooked, the judge is crooked, and half of y'all up on this table is crooked. And that's the truth. This poor lady right here.
Mayor, sir, if you could direct your comments to the entire city council.
I'm directing them to you, but I'm also directing them to other people that's sitting behind this tape. This poor lady right here, she's the only black woman up there. You got a council white woman over there. She's by herself. Where's the black men up there to help? Because all y'all men is railroading the women to speaking their mind. I know what goes on in this town, like I said. Me and JB goes way back, and I know every crook in this town. I promise you. I know where all the bones is buried. I promise you that too. I'm coming. And I got help coming to this town to clean this mess up. I promise you. Look me dead in the eye because you know what I'm talking about.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
We'll talk, we'll talk after this.
Yeah. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Bob Hudlow.
Mr. Hudlow, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record.
I would. I'd like to be to take look at these pictures I took this morning.
Okay, well, so that, so that we, for the record, if you wouldn't mind getting behind the podium, be glad to get this to our clerk. If you don't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Been here before and done that. Bob Hudlow, 303 North Delphine Avenue, Waynesboro. I'm here to talk to you about the property located at 303 North Commerce Avenue. You have the pictures there. Looking at the first pictures, there's a picture of the front of the building, and it goes all the way around the building, and it shows what kind of condition that it's in. It shows what I have to look at every day. I have to look at the meth heads partying over there. I've called the police. They come in, they pat them on the back and send them on their way. I've asked Fishburne Military School to clean up the property. Oh, they're going to do it. They're going to do it. Haven't yet. I've asked the city to intervene on my behalf and get that property cleaned up. They're going to do it. They're going to do it. My question is, when? When will they do it? I have been trained in asbestos identification remediation, and that place is full of asbestos. I want you to keep that in mind. It has asbestos. Now, I would like for you to help me get Fishburne Military School to come and straighten up their mess. They don't even cut the grass. They put signs up with tape that said, "No trespassing." They've all fallen off except for one, and I took pictures all the way around. There's one sign. So, you know, people say, "Well, I didn't know I couldn't trespass." I mean, I didn't know I couldn't come in on the property. So help me if you would, please. I'd like to see it cleaned up. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments.
Ms. Jen Lewis.
Ms. Lewis, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Jennifer Lewis at 113 Iris Drive. Birthday's coming up, so send birthday cards with presents. Thank you. I am here on Women's Equality Day, which we are celebrating today. I just came from an ERA event in Stanton. So I'm just here today to ask you all to pass a resolution that the city of Waynesboro, your council, supports the ERA resolution. And then I also want to just say thank you for passing the resolution earlier today, addressing all the hatred stuff that our city is, is sometimes plagued by. But I do want to share, kind of, you all know I'm running for office, and I, I go canvassing, I've knocked some of your doors before. And even when I knock a door of somebody who opens a door and they say, "I know who you are, I'm never going to vote for you, but thanks for stopping by." That's my impression of the people of Waynesboro, is that even when they don't engage. Is that even when they don't agree with me, even though they don't like me, I've never been threatened, I've never had a door slammed in my face, and I knock every door. I've knocked a door of Trump voters and Hillary supporters. So I appreciate that resolution earlier tonight that proves how friendly Waynesboro is. But I am here again to just say it's Women's Equality Day and would appreciate you all passing a resolution that you support the ERA. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So with that, we have...
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to recess into closed meeting to consider personnel matters regarding the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, benefits, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of a specific public officer, appointee, or employees of the city as permitted by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. The subject matter of this meeting is the performance plans for a chartered employee.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This requires a roll call vote.
Mayor Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Hostetter?
Aye.
And we are in session. Thank you. And we are in session. Thank you.
With the respect to the just concluded closed session, and to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and two, only such business matters as identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the city council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. This motion calls a roll call vote.
Mayor Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Hostetter?
Aye.
We're back in session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.